Just to get your attention, we've had some cases come off. So you're here for the number two case on the agenda, Exor Asset Management, for Linden Street withdrew their application. Cedar Avenue.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
Is it on?
Okay. Cedar Avenue, 512 Cedar Avenue has asked for an extension to come back next month. Case number eight, the wireless, Singular Wireless, has asked to come back next month. And the rooming boarding houses on Madison Avenue, both houses, as 801, 803 and 813, 815, has again asked to come back next month. So if you're here for those, the cases will not be heard tonight. We'll see you next month. They'll be back next month.
Okay, but in the meantime, I can give you something. This is Motel Six. That's across the street from us.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all the people that are supposedly related.
All right, go forward this onto the right department.
Thank you.
Thank you. We set? Everybody set? You set? Okay. Good evening. The September 2020 meeting of the City of Scranton Zoning Hearing Board will now come to order. Mr. King, can you please take role?
Mr. Dugum?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is beyond them trees, straight across. So it's out of sight, but it is there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please become, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. State your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning officer. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111 of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Any remarks from the board? Mr. King, can you verify that you posted all the postings?
Yes, sir.
Very good. First case. Let it rip.
Case number one, William Frank Grippo, experienced to use storage garage for auto sales and auto repair at 1507 North Main Avenue, CN Zone.
Could you please raise your right hand? You soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
Can you please state clearly your name and address?
William Frank Grippo, 110 Shelby Circle, Old Forge, Pennsylvania.
You may proceed.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Blake. I'm counsel for the applicant. This is a continuation of a hearing that we held pre-pandemic in March.
Attorney Blake, I need to stop you right there. There's something I want to bring up. The continuation of March, so I like to start the testimony from square one again because it's five months ago since this board met. Any testimony then is probably mostly forgotten by this board. So if you have no problems, let's start this. Tonight is the first part of this case. And Mr. Penitent, are we okay with doing that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. I anticipated that it would have just been a continuation, but we can...
Well, it's five months ago.
Right, that...
So I want to give your applicant the benefit of the doubt that we know everything instead of forgetting stuff, so, thank you.
Mr. Grippo, could you tell the board a brief history of the business that you have at 1503 North Main Avenue?
Sure. We, uh, my dad opened the business in 1967. He started a general repairs garage and a body shop. Uh, he ran the business until 2004 very successfully and handed it down to me. I'm his son, William. And I've been running it since 2004 to the current date today. And, uh, we're trying to expand our business.
As part of that business, did you do automobile sales?
Yes, we did. We were, um, we were able to receive a dealer's license to sell cars at 1503 North Main.
Before you ask, that microphone is not for us. That's for the ECTV. So you don't have to talk into it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nothing's happening. You're not being answered.
If you sit in front of me, I gotta come...
Yeah.
Be close to it. You don't have to speak into it.
Okay.
So you are licensed at that location to sell vehicles, correct?
Yes, sir.
And within that very neighborhood, are there other businesses that sell vehicles?
Yes, there is. There's about...
And where are they located?
On North Main Avenue from Greenridge Street all the way down to Old Forge. There's a bunch of them, thirty or more.
But with respect to directly across the street, is there an automobile sales business?
Yes, there is.
And is there another one down North Main closer to Greenridge Street?
Yes, there is.
And is there another one further down the opposite way on North Main?
Which way?
On, further down on North Main.
Towards West Side?
Yeah.
Yes, there's very many of them.
And are there other commercial establishments on that same block of North Main Avenue?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Um, now you, you purchased 1507 North Main, what, in 2016, I believe, correct?
Yes.
And that was purchased from the city, wasn't it?
Yes.
Um, what had, what had been at that property beforehand?
It was a doctor's office, doctor's ale, and after that it was a apartment house for the University of Scranton children, kids.
What happened to that when it was used as an apartment building?
It got condemned and a few years later was tore down by the city.
And after that, you acquired it?
Yes.
And... Have you made any improvements to 1507 North Main since you acquired it?
Yes, we have. We built, constructed a pole barn building there and concreted the whole lot and sidewalks.
Were there sidewalks there before you did, you...
I wouldn't call them sidewalks. They were worse than the woods. They were all cracked stone. Women would be pushing their strollers in the street to avoid the sidewalks.
Um, and you're here today asking this board for a variance to, um, perform both automobile sales on that lot as well as automobile field repair within the pole barn building, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and again, how long have you been in automobile sales at, directly across Clearview Street? Since 1967 or the...
No.
Since the seventies?
On 1507, we don't have a sales...
No, 1503.
1503, we've been there with a dealer license for, uh, since 2001.
Um, now, since the, since the last hearing, um, has the city installed any signage along Clearview Street?
Uh, yeah. There's two no, no parking signs on the road on the side of my 1507 lot.
Is that a, an accurate picture of the, one of those signs?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to tender this to you?
Yes, please. I'll pass it down to the board.
In addition to that, those two no parking signs that were installed by the city, did you also have no parking painted on the roadway?
Yes.
Thanks, Counsel.
And in addition to those no parking signage, have you had, um, parking spaces lined out and painted on the 1507 North Main lot?
Yes, we have.
And let me show you, uh, these pictures. Are those accurate photos of, of the lot?
Yes.
With respect to this first one, can you tell the, the board, what does it depict where the yellow sports car is?
That's a handicap ramp.
Okay. And that's a designated handicaps parking spot?
Yes, yes.
And can you tell the board what this picture depicts? How many parking spots in front of that?
In front of that is four.
And then, in addition, can you tell the board what this photograph shows? How many spaces?
Um, parking for five.
Okay. So in addition to the one handicap park, parking space that existed, have you created ten more spots, parking spots on 1507 North Main?
Yes, we have.
Now, Counsel, when you say additional parking spots, are you talking on the street or in that lot?
No, this is on the lot.
Okay.
On, on lot.
And these are for customers? Not for car sales?
Well, they are used, um, um, right now, he doesn't have any cars for sale, so, um, they've been used for customers, yes. The car sales, uh, Mr. Grippo, are the car sales a main part of your business or are they incidental to your car repair business?
Well, right now, they're not the main part. We do mostly repairs because we're not selling any cars right now at 1507. We're, we are at 1503. There's only like one car there for sale now.
And, um, I have a note for the board. Um, according to the zoning ordinance, I think it said, uh, five on off-street parking spaces were required per, uh, per repair pay. And, uh, you don't sell gas at this location, do you, sir?
No, sir.
So the fuel, the fuel nozzle issue is, is not at issue?
Are your customers in this lot, car lot? Does somebody park in the lot? Are you gonna have cars on this lot to sell?
Only customers can come in and park. Not for anybody else. Does she it?
It's your picture.
Which one? Yeah, that wasn't my car. The friend, customer, cousin of mine. Uh, this is a dealer's car. They take the tag off when they bring them. And then when they pick them up, they put their tag back on. This Audi? Dealer is a customer.
Are these less leases there?
No, it might have been completed or not started yet. And then we park them out there when they're completed for them to pick them up.
Is that the same day or date?
Well, it depends if you get the part, you know, you know, if you get the parts then.
You have to explain it to them.
Well, I'm sorry. Uh, I don't know what that car was there for.
There's another one too that's been for the...
Which one? Is that one? I don't even know what that is. I'm not sure what that one was. It might have been a dealer car.
Yeah, I seen that, yep.
So that's where your cars are gonna be for sale when you get approved, right?
If I could put five there, that'd be the most I'd put.
And then where do those cars go to?
What do you mean?
Like when you don't have that room for the customers anymore, where are you gonna put them?
Well, the other picture shows the four directly across.
That's on the street, right?
No, no, those are onsite.
Let's let them, let's let them finish the testimony. And then we'll, we'll, I'm sure we all have questions.
I just want to be clear. We, there are eleven onsite parking spaces that have been created. Five facing North Main Avenue, four facing the building, the additional handicap spot, and then one more, um, parallel to the building.
When you say facing the building, you're facing the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Well, no, 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 no. Something's not right there. Go ahead. I'll, I'll ask you questions when you're done your testimony.
Well, I guess it depends where you can, if the front of the building is North Main, North Main, it's facing the front of the building.
The new, yeah, that's, we're here for the new building tonight, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all those photos show.
Okay.
That's just the new building.
So getting back to what you were asking me about, where the cars I'm gonna sell are gonna go? They would go in the front there where the five, and then I wouldn't take customer jobs if I didn't have the space.
So this is for you to sell? This is, you're not renting this property out?
No, I'm gonna work there myself and, you know, sell myself.
And, and just, I, perhaps I wasn't clear. His existing business is literally directly across Clearview Street.
Yep.
And he has endeavored to, he's put signage up within his, within his exit 1503 North Main, reminding customers that they have to obey the no parking signs. Um, you know, I hope you give him some indulgences. I mean, he can't police each and every customer that comes in. Some customers drop in, drop their cars off at night and, and throw their keys in the lockbox.
Understandable, so we've been touching on this.
But we have put signage up and we have reminded them.
Well, since we touched on it for a couple minutes there, then I'm gonna have a couple of questions here. I was over there yesterday at nine-thirty in the morning. The sidewalks that you put in there are blocked with cars. The no parking signs that you have there in the Pan Road is lined with cars with hoods up and people fixing them on both sides of the street. I'm not worried about the side. You already have the business. I'm looking at the side there. So if women are pushing that stroller yesterday or today, they can't come down your sidewalks. They're blocked. The repairs being...
I never knew that. I only parked up...
I got, I got, I, I, you have your pictures. I have mine that I took. Someone saw one of your employees screamed at me because I was taking pictures. They didn't know who I was. I was on the street taking them.
Are you talking in the front of Main?
Well, this, this is Clearview Street going up. I see your no parking signs and customers' cars are parked, or customers or friends or whoever had their hoods up fixing cars in the middle of the street. So from the corner up, there's cars parked. On the sidewalk on Clearview side of that building, there's cars parked. So there is no clear entrance, or there's no clear passageway inside your building. And repairs can't be done on the street. If a bus tried to get up Clearview Street, which they do, school bus, they can't make that turn right there. So I have a problem, what you do on the other side is already existing. I have a problem what I see right there because there is nothing legal about what I seen there yesterday. And, and so you're asking me to approve something that's coming in illegally already? You had the, I listened to you. You had your signs posted, which is good. But you're not, you're, you're, you're not adhering to them. So that's on the parking?
No, that's right.
I mean, with all due respect, I mean, someone who pops a hood and starts doing work on a vehicle, almost by definition, isn't one of his customers.
Okay, then let's back up a little bit, all right? Counsel, I wasn't born yesterday. I stood there for a half hour looking at it. I walk every property. I says, every other member on this board. They were going back and forth to that garage to get tools. So they're either good friends or strangers stealing the tools, tools. I'm gonna go with that they're a customer or a friend that was repairing a car in the street with his knowledge or his employee's knowledge. I mean, I didn't see him there, so...
I go on, tell them to, you know, put it down, come and talk to me, and we'll set something up.
That, that, but that's not our job to do. That's, that's your job to police it on a daily basis. Um, I mean, on Main Avenue, you're fine. Main Avenue, your cars will be behind the line.
Right.
I don't know if they're all customer cars or cars that hopefully down the road intend to sell. I mean, that's your business if that's what you're gonna do, but... I, I had a big problem what I seen there yesterday because if it's not being policed now, how do I know it's gonna be policed six months, a year, eighteen months, two years down the road?
Well, well, I don't want...
Before you continue with, uh, Mr. Dan, so we, we, we see this a lot with car lots that we approve before and after we approve them. We see that you're doing something wrong. We give them the benefit of the doubt. We don't wanna turn the business away. So we say, sure, you have what you need, and then things like this happen. So if, if you wanna get approved, whatever's been said and it's happening, has to stop.
Oh, thank you. It's gonna be playing limbo a lot today, so...
My, I'm, I'm sure my, my client will...
Car lots are a very, very hard thing because people do not follow. We, we send him quite often to a car lot that has been approved by this board because people say they're gonna do and then go.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You can, I'm finished. Go ahead.
Our apartment houses on the other side of my building where they park there and they go bring their groceries in, come back and move their car. I mean, I, I don't let them, tell them to get out of there.
I'm not, I don't care about the people who sit. I'm talking about the working on the cars in the middle of the street.
You know, there's, you know, there's cars, there's, they go to the other businesses there and they'll park there where there's no parking signs. I can't be a police officer and go tell them to move. I, it's not my duty there with the no parking sign already up.
But on Clearview side, street, your property is your duty, right?
With the parking signs?
Yeah. No, I mean...
I don't know if it is or not. If they're in the street, I should do it, right? Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's up to you, but I mean, if they're coming, they're spilling over from your garage, but these cars clearly work, that, that's your duty. I mean, if you want the insurance to go through and you wanna run your business the right way, that, that part falls on you.
Yeah, I mean, my client, my client, my client will not allow employees to lend tools or work on cars on Clearview Street. I mean, let me make that clear. I mean, you agree with that, correct?
Yes, I wouldn't do that.
We will not, if, if that has occurred in the past, we will stop it from happening in the future.
Dan, is this an R1?
It's a CN.
CN.
CN, okay, thank you.
He wants us to refresh my memory because I was here five months ago. What you didn't have in the making file that you gave us in the first place? What was the reason you filed the...
I think, um, Mr. King asked us to show the parking, and that's what we endeavor to do. We, we, that showed the parking. No, we did not. Which I have, right, I do, you know...
I was gonna say, do you have a parking plan?
I do have, uh, uh, the parking, uh, the eleven spots shown on here, um, which I'll submit as my next exhibit. And again, uh...
So this is...
This is the handicap, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and then eleven is this one.
So this is... This is Main here?
Yeah.
And their parking spots for? Cars for sale, right?
If he has them, if he has them, then he could sell.
Well, assuming that he does, assuming he has five cars. And this is your customer parking here? Is that what I'm saying, facing the building?
Yes.
Okay. And your handicap spot is, okay, right there, I see, coming off of, you're coming in this way?
Yeah, through it up.
Okay. And that's the building there? Okay.
So forgive my artwork, but I tried to show the eleven as best I can.
It, it's there.
And as far as the, the comment about school buses, um, I mean, as far as I know, there's never been a citation or anything regarding school bus access. I mean, when school was in session and they were using it, Monday through Friday, they were going up and down it. Um, I think these no parking signs, um, closer to the corner of North Main and Clearview, um, as enforced, will, uh, assist in that, uh...
You see me smiling here, right? Because it's not enforced by, my, my problem here is, is, I mean, the police can enforce it all they want, but your client needs to enforce that there because it's his vehicles that are there. It, it's not me coming over, parking there, running, dropping groceries off or anything like that. It, it, it's his customers that are parking there, so...
We'll do our best. I mean, we'll, we'll do it.
Hire a cop. I have to.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah.
Bob, you have anything else? Anything else?
I did wanna, I did wanna also comment that on, on the existing property, 1503, um, my client has endeavored to put up some fencing and, uh, has, uh, removed some, uh, um, parts and, and debris and, uh, has cleaned it up substantially and has actually enclosed it. So there's fencing now along the back.
Good, good. Is there anyone else here that wants to comment on this case? No one? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You want to ring one or, what do you want, justify? Okay. So before we vote, uh, Mr. Penitent, we wanna put a stipulation on there that no more than five cars for sale on that lot since he has the five spaces. Yeah, yeah. I mean, if he, he's saying he's, he's only has the five spots in the front and that's all that can be for sale. I don't think we can stipulate anything on the street as far as parking cars waiting to be sold on the street. That's gonna be a city problem at that point. Uh, but on this lot here, no more than five vehicles for sale. Yes, yes.
Sorry, who's the second?
Sean. Yes, we are.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
No. If I vote a four to one, you have to improve. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, let me see your... I don't figure here, we have Madison Avenue is off, so take care, Counsel. Whenever you're set down.
Next case, uh, 731 El Tapanava LLC affirms order of the zoning officer regarding use of 523, 27th, 29th Burke Street and/or the alternative, seek a variance for those addresses for the development of a parking lot and accessory use for the principal use of restaurant at 731 Pittston Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Greg Pascal. I represent, uh, the applicant, 731 El Tapanava LLC. It's owned by my client, Efrem Muniz, and his wife Carmen. And, uh, he operates at Carlos Restaurant at 731 Pittston Avenue.
Counsel, are you, attorney?
Yes.
Okay, attorney, uh, Counsel, I'm gonna swear them in before we start.
Yep.
Okay, please raise your right hand.
Right, your other right hand.
Are you testifying as well?
Yes.
I'm gonna swear in, please, you're swearing in as well. You soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Yes.
Please, we'll start with you, sir. Please state your name and address. And if you could spell it for our stenographer, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Efrem Muniz.
You, you could pull your mask down while you're doing it, please.
Efrem Muniz, uh, my address, uh, 71 Pittston Avenue.
You gotta speak loud. We have no microphone here.
Efrem Muniz, 731 Pittston Avenue.
Thank you. Speak like he does. All right, please continue, Counsel.
Yeah, preliminarily, um, the request is to allow him to, to pave this lot. There are two houses in between the restaurant and this, this lot. Uh, I know from the history of this property, that lot has been associated with the commercial restaurant since it was Tom and Jerry's. going back in early two thousand, I believe. Um, we do have a petition signed by ten of the neighbors I'd like to read. Uh, dear zoning members, we encourage to rezoning of the property at five twenty-three, five twenty-seven, five twenty-nine Burt Street as it will bring benefit to the community. The creation of a parking would clear out the street and create more parking places. We have no issue with the dumps are located at location. The owners of the property always maintain clean. Please take this under consideration. I'd like to submit this as an exhibit if I could.
Please do. Thank you, sir.
So the, the purpose of the request is to be able to pave this parking lot and, uh, there are two dumpsters on the property. One is for recycling, one is for trash. Mr. Muniz would, uh, put a fence to screen the two dumpsters if this permission is granted. So, um, Mr. Muniz, how long have you owned a Talos Restaurant?
Ten years.
Okay, and your intent is to use this lot for parking for your employee, employer, employees and customers, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and, uh, you would agree if this is permitted, you would put screening, a fence around your dumpsters?
Yes.
That, that's all I have, I don't know if the board members have any questions of Mr. Muniz.
Um, I, I just have a few. How long have you, have you owned the lot itself?
We've rented for about close to ten years, we just recently bought the building a couple months back.
Not the lot, the building, the lot, the parking lot.
The lot is associated with, it's in the same deed.
Okay, okay, sure. I know the, the previous owner had come before the board, twice, and was rejected on that lot years ago, when Tom and Jerry's was there. I wasn't sure if it was a separate entity or not. The problem I see with the lot there, it's never, it's not really maintained, it's overgrown in the front, in the back. I mean, I don't know how long you have it so far, but, uh, if you're renting the building, you're responsible for that lot as well, I take it. Uh, I, I just feel the maintenance could have been better on it. And I gotta be assured that the maintenance is gonna be done and maintained for that neighborhood there.
And part of the problem is, you'll notice there's cars parked, they're all neighborhood cars. Mr. Muniz has tried to police that, if he's able to pave this and clean it up, he will be able to keep it in better shape than right now.
The back section where the dumpsters are is overgrown, I mean, there's no cars there, that, that's an area that, that could have been and should have been maintained. Are you gonna ma, still let the neighbors park in that lot?
He will allow them, you know, uh, sometimes, uh, our neighbors, they leave garbage there, they keep it maintained, it's again policing.
Um, you're gonna let people repair their cars, sir, 'cause that goes on, no?
Same thing, yeah, uh, we're gonna stop that.
And, and, uh, Dan, what's our distance here from the, I'm sorry, Dan, or Dan, either one? Right, but I mean, do, how far away from the door are we looking at for this lot, is that why it was turned down or stopped?
The ordinance, I mean, typically allows parking if it's within four hundred feet of the, the business. Now, we're a little different situation here, because the business is in a commercial zone, the parking is in a residential zone. But I, I would think it would meet that four hundred feet, areas needed, because technically it's, parking is a principal use in a residential zone.
Right.
It is within a few hundred feet of this front door.
Right.
It will need offers.
Yeah, I was gonna question on that right now, um.
And before we just get to that, I mean, Mr. King, I mean, if we develop those lots in the parking lots, we're gonna require paving, I mean, we're gonna be some water issues going on there.
But then we have to be concerned about runoff as well.
The ordinance says if there's five thousand square feet of parking is covered, then it has to be submitted to the city agency for school parks. If it's less than that, there's a requirement to do.
How, how, what is our, uh, Dan, do you know what the measure of that lot is?
It's forty by eighty, so it would be less than five thousand square feet.
That's forty by eighty?
I believe so.
That'd look like a double lot there, yes, that is. Yeah, that, there was two houses there at one time.
We, we would not pay more than five thousand square feet, we would keep it under that. But we would submit a permit, obviously, to the city before we do any of the work. Mr. Penatar mentions screening, Mr. Muniz, if you're allowed to do this, you agree to put a fence around the property for screening?
Well, we'll, we'll put contingencies in there. So now, now you just raised another question for me, if he's only gonna pay less than five thousand to stay away from some of the requirements, what happens to the rest of the land? What's gonna happen to the area that's not paved?
You're gonna landscape it?
Yeah, on the sides. See, I, I, we don't wanna measure it. No, I'm in eighty, we're guessing eighty, I, I, it's a large lot, I, I think, I think it goes above the eighty. We, we, we need some measurements, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Muniz can answer that question.
Okay, good.
What are you gonna do with the rest?
He would like to do landscaping as well, to maintain.
Well, that's, we're gonna switch channels to another question here. And I'll speak for myself, not the rest of the board, I don't have measurements of that lot to look at. We don't know what that lot size is, so unless you could produce some lot sizes here. Cause you're gonna require buffers on each side, areas that, you know, we can't go in, eight feet, we said, on each side? Same thing in the, each side, right, and the rear. So I mean, now we don't, we're guessing your size of your lot. How many parking spots, how many, how many spots you're gonna look for in that lot?
I have fourteen, fourteen, twelve cars.
About twenty.
Well? They wanna do a continuance. Um, just discussing this right here, uh, I, I think the board feels that we, you should seek a continuance and come back with them exact measurements.
Okay, we'll do that.
And a plan.
And, and, and a plan, a parking plan where we can see what you're gonna do, I mean, you, you know how big your lot is, and you have to have an eight-foot buffer from each side coming in. So, uh, and in the rear as well.
Entrance, exits.
Your entrance, exits off the street. Um, like your, where your parking spot's gonna be, make sure you have enough room between them, parking lanes. So this way everything's in front of us and we can make a better decision. So it's up to you to ask for a continuance.
Yeah, we, we ask the board for a continuance so it can provide that information at the next hearing.
Motion made in second attempt? Yes. So please get a hold of Mr. King, I'm sure he can assist you with some of what you need there and everything, and schedule it for next month if you're ready to come back.
And I would ask if it hasn't been that dead exhibit, be admitted in evidence.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So you cannot give testimony to us right here?
No, I have a statement. I would just like to read my statement. What if that's not, I mean, that's not doable, what if, if the date?
You can, you can write it, you can write your testimony and submit it to Mr. King, and we can read it into the record at that point there.
We have neighbors here and owners of, of, of other properties that are very interested in this matter.
And we would love to hear it.
But we, we can't, we can't make a decision on what he has right there, because we don't have all the facts.
We do, we do have the facts, which is the other part.
But he's the applicant, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, I've been on the other side with this a couple times before I get on the board. And I agree with what you're saying, but we already voted on the continuance, so the testimony is stopped, so there's nothing you're gonna say can go in the record or anything anyway right now.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I, I know it's, it stinks, I mean, it, it's just the, the nature of the beast.
We'll be back next month.
Very good, thank you, thanks for coming tonight.
Regarding the testimony, uh, the petition that was submitted, uh, from the neighbors, the neighbors that are here that are adjacent and around that property weren't solicited for a signature on that. And the information said they were in favor of it be shared with the neighbors.
We can discuss that all that, obviously, next month.
Well, it's just we could look into it whether or not they are there in the meantime, and be prepared for it.
Do we have that petition? Carrie, do you have that petition, or? Mr. Welby? We'll let you take a picture of it, it's in evidence. Hope they can find it. I pass it down. I don't know, I lost my paper. All set down? Yep, we're ready. He's on his way in. We're waiting on you.
Right here, buddy, you're up.
You're up, we're waiting on you.
My name's Peter Tayon of Tyone Realty.
I'm gonna swear you in first, okay, could you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address and spell your last name for this.
My name is Peter Tayon, T A Y O U N, uh, from Tyone Realty. The address is nine twenty-six Wyoming Avenue in Scranton, PA, one eight five zero nine. And I'm, I'm here tonight to, uh, seek relief of three foot to install a pole barn building on my property, twenty-four by thirty-two.
You're looking for the relief from the rear?
In the rear, yes.
The driveway, whatever's back there?
Yes.
And is this gonna, uh, be brought up right up against your existing building?
It is, it'll be flush with the front and the back of the building. Yes, sir.
No repairs or anything in there, just?
No, just for storage of tires. Uh, no, it used to be, it's just, yeah, yeah, Bellardi's, uh, sold out, yeah, no, this is not a highlight anymore.
Questions, any questions, question? Anyone here to give testimony in this case, anyone else here for testimony in the case?
Can I make a motion?
Hang on, hang on one second. Carrie, do you have any? He's looking for a three-foot relief from the driveway in the rear. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Yes, by order, five is here, you've been approved.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, we'll swear both you in. Could you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Could you please state your name and address, sir?
Gary DeBilio, uh, I live at one oh two Whitetail Drive in Scranton, but I own a property at three oh two, three oh four South Main Avenue in Scranton, next door to the subject property.
I'm gonna stop you right there. Gentlemen, gentlemen, we're giving testimony. Mr. Tayon. Gotta move.
Nick Sikolski, my address is nine hundred Lorien, Olafen, PA.
You can proceed.
Uh, good evening zoning board members and zoning officials, I commend you for having the meeting tonight, uh, under these circumstances. I prepared a couple remarks that I'd like to read, if you don't mind. My name's Gary DeBilio, I own a building at three oh two, three oh four South Main Avenue. For the past twenty years, DeBilio Insurance Agency. It's next door to the subject property, which is three oh six, three oh eight, South Main Avenue. It's an empty lot that extends from South Main back to, uh, South Decker Court, sixty by about one hundred and seventy-five feet. There's an empty building, a vacant building on it that's boarded up right now, that faces South Decker Court. I have a, uh, yeah, I have a sales agreement with Nick Sikolski to, uh, to sell three oh six, three oh eight, South Main Avenue. I've known and talked to Nick about this, his intentions of opening a clean, high-end auto sales business, no service, no storage, uh, no traffic issues, uh, business. Uh, the building there that faces South Decker Court, uh, will be vastly improved from its current conditions, which would be an improvement for the neighborhood. I would not sell a property next to my own that would negatively affect my property value or negatively affect my neighborhood that we are in. I'm confident that Nick's business will improve the neighborhood and property values. Uh, the two-block stretch of South Main Avenue between Walgreens at Luzern Street and West Side Tire Service at Washburn Street is mostly commercial properties, for the most part. With all due respect to Mr. Dunne, who's a friend of mine, and he's here tonight, I don't know if he's in favor of this, of this project or against it, I'm gonna guess he's against it. But I just wanted to say that, uh, Mr. Dunne, who owns a building behind me on Division Street, occupied by a dance studio, which I've had some zoning issues over. The building, when it was opened, should have come before the zoning board.
I, I gotta stop you first, he's not on trial here, all right? He's not before the board, so we'll take it back.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anyway, that's, that's my testimony, uh, Nick Sikolski would give separate testimony if, if he would.
I believe Mr. DeBilio pretty much hit every point I'd like to speak about. If there's any neighbors that are here that I, I don't know everyone, but I'd just like to ease some concerns about, I know traffic would be an issue and a concern. to ease some concerns about, I know traffic would be an issue and a concern. I can assure you that's something that will not happen. It, there'll be no service on vehicles. There will not be a mechanic shop or a garage. Strictly vehicle sales.
Testify us, please.
Strictly vehicle sales used as almost a showroom. High-end vehicles cleaned, the whole property would be redone, modernized, and it would no longer be an eyesore to the community. I would bring revenue, jobs to the community. And I believe if you rip this down on paper as far as pros and cons of this proposition, the pros far outweigh the cons. And, um, if there's anything else I could elaborate or clear up, I'm here to answer, and that's pretty much all I have right now.
What's the plan for development of that property?
The plan that you've submitted shows traffic coming in and out of South Decker Court.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's your access?
It would be access, yes.
How many cars do you plan on having?
Roughly, it's, it's not gonna be a stuffed-in-there packed car dealership. I intend to have, say, fifteen, roughly fifteen to twenty top, tops vehicles in that lot.
Is this, are these exit parking spots?
Yeah, that was just a rough draft. I'm sure it's not on the money, but I would say fifteen to twenty, based on, you know, buffer zones from the neighboring homes, I'd have to stay away from that. So I would say about fifteen to twenty. It's not gonna be like most car lots you see, cars are just packed in there. It's gonna be spaced, high-end vehicles, and that's it. No si- no service, no vehicle, no garage for, you know, mechanical work. Strictly showroom sales vehicles, that's it.
Reason I ask is, so these numbers are flexible, I'm counting twenty-five exits?
Yes, what's the, yeah.
And then I'm assuming the P's are for custom parking?
That would be the parking next to the, the structure in the back.
How deep is this lot?
It's about one hundred and seventy-five feet from South Main back to South Decker Court, and about sixty feet wide.
The lot where you, Carrie, the lot where your customers park, is that your lot also?
In the back of my building?
Do that even go?
Yeah, back of my building is my customers alone, yeah.
And he's not gonna be able to give that to everybody, all, the whole lot is...
Yeah, his customers would go inside of his property and, or, you know, park on Main Avenue, or there's a few spots in front, a couple of spots in front.
So these cars are gonna enter your lot in full repair? So it would be no oil changing, no fluids going to the ground?
No mechanical work, no garage, strictly frontline-ready vehicles.
If I go by there, I'll never see a hood open?
You'll never see a hood open. Unless they're looking at the engines.
That's different.
The house, the legal offices, that the plan, or?
Yes, yes.
And you're gonna remodel it?
No, it'll be completely redone, no... Modernized, beautiful.
Right now, it's an eyesore to the neighborhood, the building.
And this lot would be paved?
Yes, yes. I'll have all the permitting, and when I'm, when that time comes to get it paved and do it the correct way. On the... Yes.
And that the lot is sixty foot wide, right?
It's just about sixty, eight, eight-foot buffers on the side, so you got about forty-four feet.
So I mean, you're losing your exits across the front then, as we speak, though?
We're losing too.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
What's your plan for lighting and signage?
Um, I'd have to get exactly as far, I don't know exactly how I'd have to go about the permitting for where I can put them, but I would intend on putting a sign closer to Main and obviously get the permits to run the electrical to it.
Okay, do you, do you want your customers to go right through South Decker Court or not?
I, I, I intend them just to come in the back, 'cause it's not gonna be a high tra- like, it's not gonna be a mechanic garage as far as, if you have a garage, you're working on cars that's non-stop. It's gonna be...
I, I only worry about people exiting Main.
I wasn't, I wasn't intending on using that as an exit. That would be cars on the line in the front, so that would be all blocked.
You'd have to go before the state together.
And that would have to be, Penn Datter would have to approve entrance, entrance for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would have to be approved. Yeah, so that's, my intentions are for vehicles as a, you're driving by to see them, so that would be all blocked.
And you're not looking for Main Avenue exit out of there?
No, no.
What's your, your planned hours of operation?
It would probably be, I mean, banker hours, no, ten to five maybe?
No, let's, let's, let's take maybe office.
I would say, I mean, realistically, we'll say nine to five.
So evening hours?
Yeah, nine to five.
Weekends?
I would probably no weekends, no.
You wanna sell cars or just showcase?
Internet, ninety percent of sales are on the internet these days.
Yeah, you're right.
That's ma- basically just for advertisement, that's what it would be.
Anything else? Carrie, anything else? Anybody else here for a testimony?
Uh, before we get to testimony, may I, uh, like to ask some questions of the applicant. My name is Matt Barrett. I'm here tonight on behalf of...
My name is Attorney Matthew Barrett. I'm here tonight on behalf of Gerald and, or Gerard and Kathy Donahue. They own properties at three oh three, three oh five, South Main Avenue. Uh, they also own a property at three oh seven, three oh nine, South Main. I'm sorry, that's MMJ owns that one. Mr. Donahue is a principal in that. And then they also own the property Division and Decker, which is just behind the property next to it, the subject property. With regards to the, the intended use, I see that there is a structure in the back, and I know there's been some reference to using that for maybe the sales office. Is that a two-story building?
Yes.
And so that would be a good location for maybe an apartment on the second floor?
Maybe, or just storage for, uh, office paperwork. It's a sm- it's a very, it's the apartments that are there now are small.
Right, so currently in that building, it was last used as residential?
Yes.
Okay. And with regards to your intent, you may use the first floor for their sales office, possibly the second floor for residential, or for some other use, correct?
It's possible, yes.
Okay. With regards to the agreement of sale, if the, if this is not approved here tonight, you're not under any obligation to buy the property, correct?
No.
That's correct?
Or I lose my deposit.
Okay, but you're not oblig- you're not obligated to go ahead and proceed with this purchase?
No.
And you haven't, uh, actually, I have no further questions for you right now.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh, would you like me to call?
Yes, please.
Unless somebody else has a question.
No, we're good, Anderson.
Want to state your name, please, for the record?
May I be sworn?
Yes, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
And please state your name and address for the...
My name is Gerard Donahue. I reside at nine thirty-one North, North Webster Avenue in Scranton.
Do you own property on South Main Avenue?
I do indeed. I own property at three oh three, three oh five, South Main Avenue, three oh seven, three oh nine, South Main Avenue, and eleven fifteen Division Street.
With regards to the property of three oh seven, three oh nine, is that owned in a corporate name?
It is. It's under the name of MMJ Realty.
And are you the corporate officer for that entity?
I am indeed.
And you operate businesses, uh, in proximity to this property?
I do. I operate a field home at three oh three, three oh, South Main Avenue, and I operate, uh, um, a, a little business development, uh, center at, uh, three, uh, fifteen, South Main Avenue.
With regards to South Main Avenue, are you aware of any recent developments along South Main in close proximity to this property?
You mean across the street from, um, the property? I saw it posted, um, and then I received notification from this board, um, of the zoning hearing, and at that time, um, um, I investigated and, um, believed that it is a very inappropriate use for that, uh, lot in a C-N zone.
Just try to keep your voice up. How about, has there been other... Yes, keep your voice up. Uh, with regards to down the street, I guess moving towards Taylor, has there been any recent developments or properties down there?
Yes, at eleven, at the eleven-hundred block of South Main Avenue, there was big fanfare about the governor coming in and providing, uh, revenue to a developer to put in, um, a, uh, a building in conformity to C-N zone that has pharmacies, has a little restaurant, has a number of doctor's offices, has a multitude of different types. Um, but it was quite an investment, multimillion-dollar investment on a lot not much different than this lot. Um, and it is, the one thing I, I bring that up is that it shows that this top lot can be developed in keeping with the zone, um, that, that there is a, uh, a need and, and a opportunity for this lot to be used in the fashion that it was designated by this board.
And you oppose the, uh, requested variance?
I do oppose the requested variance. Uh, one thing I will agree with the, uh, the respondent was that it, it, this lot has not been taken care of. It, it has not been a good, uh, thing, and, um, my concern is that it will continue to be, um, uh, a, a eyesore to the neighborhood. Um, I would like to see it developed, but I'd like to see it developed in an appropriate fashion, uh, within the keeping of the C-N zone.
I have no further questions.
I, I would like to elaborate just a few other things. We do own the property, as I indicated, at eleven fifteen Division Street, and in that property, there is a dance studio, and in that dance studio, there are a lot of young children that come and go. Um, there is a, the, the court that the, the applicant is requesting to use for ingress and egress into this, uh, this lot is, is essentially an alley. It's a very narrow alley, um, and to use that as a, as the main thoroughfare, so to say, into a commercial establishment i- i- is, is really, um, a, a big stretch. It would certainly put, uh, the residents at danger. The alley is the demarcation line from the C-N zone to the residential zone. Um, I've owned the property at eleven fifteen Division for over forty years. Um, I've always tried to maintain it in the fashion that it should and things of sort of. My properties across the street are all maintained in the fashion that it should. In fact, the three oh two, three oh four property at one time was owned by myself. So I take great pride in our neighborhood, and I take great pride in keeping our properties appropriate. I don't own the dance studio. I own the building that the dance studio is in.
So, dance, so the kids that go to that dance studio, that kids are concerned about? Because, um, I, I think there's a lot more issue with the, the people that go to the gas station, which is right there across the street at Division, and fly down the street, on Division Street, than there would be going down an alley and then going in.
Oh, I couldn't agree with you more. I think, I think the traffic for the gas station is significant, and all we're talking about here, though, in this application, is adding to that. There is also an approved, um, a station, get, you know, sales, uh, facility down the street, just one block down at the corner of the two-hundred block, right on the corner of, uh, Washburn and Main, and, and that has become a disgrace. It's not just a sales facility. It is, they repair cars, they, the, the cars are all over the place. If that is what the board had approved at some time was just a sales facility, my fear is that this will be the same type of operation despite what was represented to this board. Washburn Street?
Yes, it is not, who came to the zoning board, that had, that building has been bought sold numerous occasions since we approved that, and when we did approve it, it was just as it was supposed to be. Car lot, it actually helped, because people would fly through that parking lot into Main Avenue. Now I can see your point, but I wanna know what you think is, is more suitable than a car lot for, uh, that property?
Are you saying?
He, he mentioned before, he said he would see, like, to see it developed, but for something more, and I forgot the word being used. What, what would...
Just one second. Just so, you're asking in conformity with the zoning ordinance? Zoning ordinance itself sets forth a C-N zone and all the permitted uses within the C-N?
Yes.
I'm, I don't know if he, I don't know if he has it all committed to memory, but to the extent we can say.
I don't, but I, I, the reason that I brought up eleven hundred of, uh, South Main Avenue is that that was developed in keeping with the C-N zone. So what I think is an appropriate use of that property is something similar along those lines. So right there is, there, there's physician's office, there's pharmacies, there's a, um, a dance studio, ragnoches, that are right next to it. Yes. And, and that is really tastefully done. It's still a project underway, but at, at this particular stage. And so I, I bring that up only from the standpoint that, that that's an example of what can appro- be done in an appropriately, um, um, C-N zone.
And that's a corner property that he's talking about, too, which is a lot more access to street parking versus the lot that I have that just has South Decker Court as the entrance for.
You good?
Yes.
Anyone else here to give testimony in this case? Anything else you decide?
Before, before the board were to rule, I, I would like to just address the legal aspect of it as opposed to the factual testimony, if you don't mind. I'd defer to the applicant first, if you prefer.
Go ahead.
Um, with regards to the questions, the C-N zone specifically sets forth various things. It could be a bakery, it could be a bed and breakfast, it could be residential, it could be any number of things that are permitted in the C-N zone. This is not permitted, and that's why they're here tonight. And as you know, under your ordinance, one eleven E, three, I believe it's B, there are various things, and the applicant's, it's required that the applicant bears the burden of proof. I've appeared before the board several times requesting variances. We've been through this many times. With regards to variances, the applicant has the burden of showing that the property cannot be developed in strict conformity with the zoning ordinances. There's been no testimony, none, zero, that has been presented to the board, that this property cannot be developed in, with strict conformity of the zoning ordinances. The only way you can give relief, I mean, and I haven't even heard any hardship, the applicant himself isn't obligated to buy the property, and as you know, the zoning ordinance specifically provides that economic hardship is not a grounds for which to, to afford, uh, variance. So even if you were inclined to grant it, even if you thought, you know what, maybe it'll clean up the property, we've heard testimony, there's a residential structure on the property. There's indications that that property, that that structure can be rehabbed. It might be used for residential purposes. That's a permitted use in the C-N. So the property itself actually presents itself as being capable of being developed in strict conformity with the zoning ordinance. And so I know the board struggles with the issues month after month, but in this situation, the, the applicant just hasn't met any burden of proof with regards to variance. So even if you were inclined to grant it, it, it's just, the evidence doesn't support that. So I just ask you to keep that in mind. As I said, I've been here before many times and dealt with the variance issues, and I've lost many times on them. Uh, and unfortunately, the applicant has to face the fact that it's really the rarity that you're using to, to grant a variance, not just somebody needs the property for some new use. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't, no, you, you brought up during that, that, uh, back and forth there. You're put, are you, are you putting an apartment in that second floor?
I, I just said it's a possibility. My intentions are...
So we're gonna look at it at that...
My intentions are a sales office. For sales, that's it.
I'm gonna look at it as a yes, because when somebody tells you a possibility, generally it gets involved.
Well, I mean, that's just opening, that's keeping a door open. I don't know, you know, I, I'm not a lawyer. He's a lawyer. He knows the law.
Well, I'm not saying it has nothing to do with the lawyer. I, I...
I know, but my intentions, as of right now, today, and my vision of what I'm gonna do in my proposal, that building is gonna be used for vehicle sales. Not an apartment building, vehicle sales only.
But I, I gotta look at it with the, with the door open, all right?
Well, you could, if...
Let me finish what I'm trying to say to you.
Go ahead.
We gotta look at your parking, because if you have tenants in there...
Yeah.
We have to look at your parking.
Okay.
So that's what we're gonna do right now.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all I was trying to say to you.
That's fine.
Would you allow a tenant that had a, that lived in the one-bedroom apartment to park in, in your lot?
Absolutely. And there's still...
Well, that, that...
Yeah, absolutely.
So we gotta look at the number of parking spots required for that, so it's gonna eliminate one and a half or two spots.
One and a half spots per unit, correct? Is that...
Yeah, two, well, two spots.
I'd say two, and then that's two, one to one to sell.
Two, yeah.
Gentlemen, with that, that drawing we have, um, like I, we don't know an exact number of cars that's gonna fit on that lot.
It's a, I believe there's more than enough room for the, for that, for parking for that, in what I'm proposing, and fifteen vehicles, more than enough comfortably.
Under requirements, it appears there's enough parking.
Correct.
Parking for a auto sale, plus one for fifteen vehicles, plus one for an employee, and we have an apartment, and we have two, one and a half for apartments. It appears there's enough parking.
Right, and that's all we're, we're questions, to make sure that...
Number, number two is, you would have to buffer this.
Yes.
You would have to pave it. The paving is over, blocked out, and the square footage gotta go for stormwater, uh, that's an engineer. There, there are the other issues that are, that isn't a buffer.
Carrie, you know the square footage, would you, if you see your lot?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the square footage of the lot?
I, I can't.
The square footage?
The square footage is sixty feet wide by one hundred and seventy-five feet deep.
Oh, yeah, so you have to...
Yeah, it's, it's a big lot.
Yeah, it's fine. As far as getting the engineers to do with the runoff water and the drainage and all that, that's something that I'm already aware of and would be done... drainage and all that, that's something that I'm already aware of and would be done properly. And that's if it is over the five thousand square feet. That's, I understand the laws-
Well, I do measurements.
Yeah, I understand the laws, yeah. Yeah, I understand as far as the permitting goes.
So with the buffers, you'd have to have an eight foot buffer on each side. That's what we're saying before, you're gonna lose your front spots there. And you're saying fifteen, I might be wrong with it, because I heard a lot of testimony, fifteen to twenty cars or?
Fifteen to twenty cars roughly. No more than twenty would be tops. Hey, can I just say something to you? I know you're worried about your, your properties. You own a lot of properties around this building that I'm trying to get. I can assure you, it's not gonna be what you're thinking it's gonna be. It's gonna be no longer an eyesore in your neighborhood. It's gonna be nice, it's gonna be clean, and it's gonna do nothing but help your property value go up. I can promise you that, I assure you that, and I hope we could be friends if this happens.
Let, let me just respond, Mr. Donohue. Obviously, once the Pandora's Box is open and you get approved, if you get approved, you then sell it to the next person and now Mr. Donohue has been there for forty years, has to deal with the next person. You may not be in your intention, but circumstances change.
I know his words and I can see it in his eyes and I know he's, has passion for what he does in, in his neighborhood. He doesn't want it to go to crap like most of the city has been. But I can promise you, if I don't get it, somebody from out of town's gonna buy it and they're gonna, there's gonna be just as much traffic in that apartment building as if it was a car lot and it's gonna look like a shit. I can promise you. At least, when I get it, it's gonna be nice. I'm a local, I'm a native to this town, I'm born and raised there, I have passion in what I do. I wish I could show you the properties that I buy and redo, they're beautiful.
It's not a reflection on you.
I know, but I just, I know he's worried. I know he's worried about what's going on. I know what he sees in the city, because I see it too, but I promise you, it won't be like that at all.
And, and part of that has been a lot of bad decisions made to, to change our zoning into non-conforming use.
Certain people, but I can promise you.
Alright, we're, we're, let's move on. Alright. So before we vote, we'd like to put some pretenses on before we vote for motion to vote. And the board discussed a little bit here. You, you know you have to have that eight foot buffer on each side. And on each side, we're requiring you to put a vinyl type fence to stop any lights coming in that lot from shining on, whether it's Mr. Villio's property or the property on the other side. The, um, the lot will have to be paved at ten thousand square feet, a little over ten thousand square feet. And if you're gonna try to take it down below that, you're gonna have a dirt lot there, we're gonna require the whole lot to be paved. Because all we're doing now is just putting a muffle wall in the back of a car lot. So that, that's, so we're gonna require as potential that the whole lot would be paved. In that case, down if in that mistake, they have to go to planning. Does that have to go to planning with the water runoff or?
No, it would be reviewed by the city engineer.
City engineer, okay, alright. Anything else on the board?
My only thing would be on the, the screening. I don't know that, does it need to be required that the vinyl fence-
Well, some kind of fencing that will, will stop the lights.
If greenery could look nicer, maybe that-
Something.
Yeah, the, the, the blinding material, I mean, it'll be up to you, but it has to be something high enough. I don't want to see bushes that's high, you know, in ten years we'll figure it'll be high enough. And we're looking at capping the number of cars in a lot of fifteen. Board in agreement?
Yes. So, uh, make some motions with those conditions that you just put on.
Do you want me to read the conditions again?
The conditions are, hey, you have to pay the entire lot, you don't have to buffers.
Shade.
The cap on fifteen and the number of cars.
Fifteen cars, yes.
These go to city engineers.
Second.
Um, I'm gonna vote yes. I've known Gary for a long time. We don't, he trusts him, I trust him. That's not why I voted yes. I want you to keep in mind that what I said earlier, in the previous garage, if something goes off, you don't visit anything, you will be, uh-
I, no, I understand. I understand completely.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. By a vote of five to zero, you've been approved.
Thank you, board.
Want to take a five minute break?
Don, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five minute break. We're gonna take a five to ten minute recess? Before we get started, I'm asking everyone, put your mask up or leave. Put it nice and simple. Alright, let's respect everyone here tonight. We're in tight quarters. Alright, we're ready for the next case?
Keystone Mission seeks variance now for a homeless shelter slash A center at 215 Hickory Street IL Zone.
What do you need to give? Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So I hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the strike.
Justin Behrens, B-E-H-R-E-N-S, 200th Drive, Mountain Top, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. You can proceed.
Thank you. Is it okay if I, can I use your guest?
Sure, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, my name's Justin Behrens. I'm the executive director, CEO of Keystone Mission. And we're looking at Hickory Street to develop a transformation center. And if you guys can turn your page to, it's the one that's located, says the homeless shelters of Pennsylvan- or homeless of Pennsylvania, that's gonna be the guideline of where I'm going with all this. So in Pennsylvania presently right now, we have about thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-nine homeless people. Of that, about one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three of them are chronic homeless. And the definition of chronic homelessness is someone that experienced homelessness for at least a year or more with also a disability. Or that they're having at least four episodes of homelessness within three years and they also have a disability at the same time. Now in Lackawanna, every year, the HUD administration will do a point in time, and what they'll do is announce the number of homeless people that they have in that timeframe. And that's actually on January twenty-ninth is when they do that. So of two thousand nineteen, there was a total of a hundred and eighty-six people that they counted in Lackawanna that were homeless. Majority of them are from the, the city of Scranton. So I kinda find that funny in that number, because what they do is they don't track the people that are couch surfing, they don't track the people that are hiding in the woods, they don't track the people that are during that time of the day that they go into the hospital or they go into a mental health treatment, or they go into a, a drug and alcohol treatment, or their mothers and fathers or family members say, hey, you know what, it's during the holiday season, I want them to come in during the holiday season, and they don't count that number. And we miss a big chunk of that. So Keystone Mission has been keeping statistics and keeping track of the numbers that have been coming through. And we're recording anywhere between sixty to seventy individuals a, a day that are coming in for a hot meal on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and Monday. So we can see that that number is increasing and it continually is increasing, especially during this COVID time, especially during everything that's going on in the, in the environment and in the world. We're reporting actually a forty-five percent increase over the past few months. So we're seeing a large increase happening. So due to that fact, we just developed a new program. It's called Team Agape. It's an outreach program that goes out with two vehicles. We have them labeled with Keystone Mission information on it. And we go out and we're starting to track the people out in the, in the woods. We're tracking people out on the square. And we're starting to do the initial treatment to get them back on track and transform their lives. That includes getting them the identity. It's difficult this time of day without getting your driver's license, birth certificate, and social security card. So we start connecting with that. We also start connecting them to their doctor's appointments, their mental health appointments, their drug and alcohol appointments, and all that information to get them moving track, moving in the right direction. It's all about transforming their lives. Our Team Agape so far has recorded that sixty-nine of the, sixty-nine percent of our guests are between the ages of twenty-six and sixty-four. A scary statistic is that sixty percent of our guests are between the ages of sixty-five and eighty. So we're seeing a more aging population that are becoming homeless. And it's actually fifty, it's almost fifty, fifty percent between man, male and female. So we're seeing that there's a larger need right now in Scranton for homelessness. There's no doubt that you can't see the homelessness here in Scranton. If you go to the square, if you go down to where our building is on Olive Street, you can see the homeless because they're hanging out by that river, they're hanging out by that woods. That's the location that they're at. So why do we need this? Or why is this happening? Our system's broken. There's no lie, and I'll be the first one to tell you, that we have a broken system. I'll give you a great example. We are working with a one individual right now that's homeless, that he went to the homeless shelter and they refused him in there because he had an expired driver's license. Now here's the funny part about the whole thing. He can get his social security disability with an expired driver's license. He can vote, get his voting registration with an expired driver's license, but he can't get into a homeless shelter with an expired driver's license. This gentleman has worked his whole life. He has been homeless because of the COVID nineteen incident. His place burnt down. He had no place to go. He's now been living on the streets, health compromised, and not knowing where to go. So with that, I was blessed about a couple months ago, the city of Scranton allowed me to open up a homeless shelter, an emergency shelter during the COVID time at Weston Field House. And what I did at that time is I opened up my own little, if you want to say, test pilot to see how things would operate and see how things would go. And while I was there, there was a very interesting statistics and a very interesting information that I got out of that. I asked three questions as the people that came in through the doors that needed help. The first one I asked them was, why are you homeless? The second one is, is what are the barriers to you becoming homelessness? And then I asked them, if you had the magic wand and you could do what you wanted to do, what would you make so that you would not be homeless again? And so these are the, these are the informations, the common themes that I got out of that. The system is broken. And what they say that is they're being pushed away rather than being embraced. They're feeling like they're lost in the whole system. They don't know where to go. Too many things to navigate to get the services that they need. There's too much red tape that they have to jump through to get to where they need to go. The criteria to get some of the service makes it impossible to get, for them to get better. They have the criteria, they have to meet benchmarks to try to get the services that they need. And so they get pushed away, they feel like they're being pushed, they don't want to go back. They don't have good relationships. And what I mean by that is, is when they're out there on, doing the survival, and they're doing the flight and fight, they're trying to survive, they start making irrational decisions. And this is what the public sees. They see the public urination and defecation. They see the crime. They see the people that are, you know, panhandling. That's because they're starting to fight, the flight and fight syndrome. They're trying to survive, they're trying to get those juices, are not producing in their brains firing correctly. They're not getting good nutrition and they start making irrational decisions. The next part is, they said, society gives me handouts. That shocked me a lot and that changed the way the Keystone Mission and the way the board, and I'm pleasant, I'm privileged enough that our president of our board is here today, Mary Wood, in that we want to change that direction. We're not here to do short-term relief. And I'm gonna be honest with you, we do short-term relief. We're here for the long-term change. Changing people in the long-term, not changing people on the short-term. The next part is, their voice is not being heard, they're being shunned and pushed away. I already talked about that. And we need a shelter that's open all day so we can get the help and not just be on our own during the day. And presently right now, we have a shelter that they're open during seven PM and they're closed at seven AM. And during the day, they're on their own to try to figure out what to do and go to the services. So the results of that emergency shelter that I had in Weston Field House, I'm proud to say that not, no neighbor in that area complained, didn't even know there was a homeless shelter in there. We controlled the people that were in there. We told them what they needed to do. They started moving in the right direction. They started making rational decisions. They started finding out that they wanted to better themselves. And I'm proud to say that forty-two individuals came through the emergency shelter. Six of those individuals reunited to their families. That means Keystone Mission got them back to their families, reunited them, and to this day, those six are still with their family. One of them is already back home with her, with her daughter, having a great time, blessed that they're doing that and moving in the right direction. Five individuals we enrolled into drug and alcohol treatment and mental health treatment. We had one individual that came through that shelter, eighteen years old, pregnant, addicted to opioids. She was actually very close to giving birth in that shelter. We got her placed into a mental health facility, or I'm sorry, a drug and alcohol facility down in Philadelphia. She gave birth to her child. She is now with her child. She's now going to secondary education where she's going to go higher to get, become, I think she wanted to become a nurse. I'm not specifically know what she's going into, but she's better herself for herself and for her family. Twenty-one of those individuals, we started teaching them life skills within the shelter. We started teaching them about budgeting. We started teaching them about self-respect. We started teaching them how to wash your clothes. We started teaching them how to take care of yourself and how to do that kind of stuff, personal hygiene. And of those individuals, we had, one of them relapsed back into becoming homeless. So that means we had twenty individuals to this day that are still in apartments, that are still living on their own and are still being productive members of society. It works if you show them love, compassion, and think about the long-term game. So that brings me to why I'm here today. We decided that we want to do a whole different ballpark and we want to look at the long-term changes. We are looking at changing the individuals on a long-term basis. And how are we gonna do that? We're gonna do that by providing classroom and life skills. We're gonna do that by providing partnerships with the community to start getting these individuals back to work while they're in our facility so that we can start training them how to budget with the money that they get. Start changing this. This is not a homeless shelter. We had a label a homeless shelter because of the zoning purposes, but this is a life transformation center. These are individuals that are coming in, making that commitment to change their life. We'll have a cafeteria in there, which will be typically like your normal cafeteria where they will eat three square meals a day. Nutrition is vital. When I was in that homeless shelter, and by the way, I forgot to tell you, I lived in that homeless shelter for two months away from my mu- what, my mother, forty and slip, my wife and also my kids. And I stayed there with them and I lived with them twenty-four, seven, and I worked with them and I listened to them, I heard their struggles, and I listened to their voices. And when I listened to their voices, I noticed on that eighth day, when you provide them healthy meals, three, three meals a day, when you give them a place to sleep, put a head on their, a head on a pillow, and you give them a place that they feel comfortable where they don't have to worry about the fight, they start making rational decisions. And I had individuals coming up to me saying, hey, Justin, I want to start learning about this. I want to start moving this way. Hey, you know what? I get social security disability. I can afford this for an apartment. Let's look for an apartment. And we move forward with that, teaching them the skills they want to do, and we follow them on the outside. So we have a kitchen, which will also be the cafeteria. We'll have a chapel. We are a faith-based organization. So we are gonna have a chapel where they can worship. The training facility, our overall goal is to have a trade school in there. Everyone's pushing out now, trade school, trade school, trade school. That's where it's gonna be. That's where you can get good education. They're great working with their hands. We want to start educating them on how to do that. Shower washing facilities and clothes facilities where they can start cleaning their clothes, washing up. How do you expect these individuals to get a job if they can't be clean and go for an interview? We want to start teaching the interview skills to get to where they need to go for a job. And then of course, last time I was in front of you guys, I apologize, I'm not sure who brought it up, but we talked about a courtyard. We want to have a courtyard where they can actually feel like it's their home and feel like it's part of them and they can feel embraced with that. The other piece that I want to talk about then is the security concerns, because that's always a concern that everybody has when it talks about a shelter. So there's a couple things I want to point out. We are gonna have a gate around the whole location. That gate will mean that people, obviously it's to protect people inside and outside, the gate will be around there. The second part is, we're gonna have a night staff there along with a security staff. And why we, why we said that is, at Keystone Mission, during our message and a meal, we hired actually the Scranton police to stay there. We noticed a change in attitude as soon as we brought them in there. When there's a presence, we notice that that helps out. So we will have that also. We'll have security cameras inside and outside the building for twenty-four, seven, along with lit up. I talked about the security staff. All of our staff, our guests will have mission ID cards. We already implemented that already at Keystone Mission right now. They get a little ID card with their picture on it along with a barcode. When they go into programs, when they go in and out, that will be their way to scan. A good example is, is when they go out to work, let's say they have a job and they go out to work, they come back, they take a breathalyzer test to make sure that they're not intoxicated. And then they'll scan their cards so that we know that they're back in the system or back in our facility and where they are. We're also gonna have, they'll also be a track, like I said, a tracking system of where they're gonna be. The big part we're gonna do is there's no loitering in front of our building. This is not a hangout. This is not a clubhouse. This is a place for true life transformation. If they're not ready to do life transformation, that's fine, that's on them. We're still gonna engage them with the outreach program, but we're looking for the people that are ready to transform their lives and really make a true effort to change their life. And that's what this is all about. We're not, only guests were allowed in the life transformation program, so it's not like a guest can go in and say, hey, listen, I want to bring my girlfriend in here, and they're not part of the program. If you're part of the program, you've got benchmarks you gotta reach- If you're part of the program, you've got benchmarks you've got to reach. You've got a level where you need to go. And we want to track that to make sure that we have the best success for these individuals so they can be productive members of society. We have a constant evaluation system or benchmarks that we're using for the guests. That's already implemented already in our program that we use. We use a program called Mission Tracker. And what they do is each guest will have benchmarks. We put them in there. Our life coaches will meet with them and make sure that they continue that progress. Stagnant, when they become stagnant, that's when we start having issues. So we want to keep pushing them in the right direction to better themselves. And then there'll be rules listed, hung, and agreed by all guests that enter the program. When we have those, when I say the rules, we'll have rules and regulations. That means drug and alcohol not permitted. There will be drug tests that will be random. I told you about in and out of the building. When you leave the building and you come back, the breathalyzer test. There will be strict rules that they got to follow. The best way I can say is, the way that Salvation Army does it and the way that they track individuals that come in and out will be very similar to what we do where there will be drug tests, there will be breathalyzer, we'll have tight security and also where they're going to go in and out. So that's the whole purpose of what we're trying to do here. We're trying to do a true life transformation center. We're looking at long-term, not short-term relief. I open that, I guess, if you guys have any questions, I'm here to yield them.
This is pretty much the same as what you wanted to do over on Wyoming.
Uh, but on steroids. This, this is actually, so that location there, I think you guys brought up a very good point about parking and about, or actually the other gentleman did, about the parking and about the access to it. In this location, we have that opportunity. The other piece that I like about this is that we're, we have an opportunity now to really engage individuals that want to make that change. We are going to say, "Listen, you come in to these doors, you're welcome. We're here to make that change. We'll love you, compassionate, with grace, move you in the right direction." And that's what it's all about.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Are you going to be dispensing any kind of medications?
That is, so we will not dispense any medications. That will actually be done, they will be locked up. When they need to take their medication, they come to us, they grab their own medication and take it that way.
It'll be locked.
We'll be locked up.
In a secured area. And how many clients you looking at, at your peak?
At the peak?
At the peak.
So at our peak, we're roughly looking at about 60.
How many employees per shift?
So during the day shift, that's when the life transformation piece is out. So that's why we have a lot more people. We're looking at roughly anywhere between six to seven people on day shift. And on night shift, you have two people, plus we're going to have volunteers.
So you have a second shift, so a second and third shift. So a second shift and an overnight shift.
Well, okay, so, hold on. First and second shift will be six people. Third shift will be two people.
So two people, even though there's going to be, at times, there'll be 60 people in that building?
Correct, it'll be locked down, oh, and security also on third shift.
Uh, are they allowed to come and go?
So, again, like I told you, when it comes to employment, they're bettering themselves. If they go to a doctor's appointment, they're bettering themselves. They're allowed to go. They're going to be tracked. They come back, breathalyzer test, screening.
What I'm looking for is if they want to go to the convenience market up in Cedar Avenue, if they can walk up to the convenience market.
They're going to be breathalyzer when they come back.
Well, I'm not worried about that. I'm just, it's an open door is what I'm asking. They can, they can come and go.
So think about it as like their residence. It's their dorm room. So they can come back, but we will be tracking everything I said.
Fair enough, yep.
And I do want to point out, in the rules and regulations, when they break that rule, it's, I'm sorry, you know, you're out of our program until you can start learning to follow the rules. It's a learning process.
So they're put, they're put back on the street?
They, so we will not.
I don't mean that in the wrong way, just an honest answer with the gentleman.
Our outreach program will then take it over.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, yep. The training of your staff, what now, what is your staff training? So say, I'm concerned about the night shift.
Okay.
Or they just, I can go get a job there as long as I'm willing to serve.
Oh, no. So we have a program, so there is actually, it's called the Genesis Program that we have just got a grant for. He is coming in here to train the whole staff on how to do that program. It's going to, it's costing a significant amount of money for that program. It's all about what you're talking about. It's training, how do you deal with these stressful situations? How do you roll with resistance? How do you real, how do you work with people that are, you know, pushing back? How do you deal with that type of situation? How do you deal with that issue and the different issues that go out there?
And your staff will also be coming to the random drug testing and everything as well, the same as the clients would be? Not the breathalyzer coming in?
But that's in our policy, yes. That's in our policy and our employee handbook.
The courtyard, that's going to be in the rear of the building?
It's going to be in the center, rear. If you, actually, if you took a picture from the top, it looks like a horseshoe. It'll be in the center area. The other piece I want to tell you is that we're taking that building and the board, along with myself, discussed that we're looking to put a significant amount of money to redo the whole building in the front to actually make it look classier. If you take a look at this sheet on the second page, we had an architect work, play around with some stuff. You can see that we're not looking to make this building look, right there. Look that picture. No, you're right.
Okay, I got it.
It's right there.
Yep.
You can see that we're making this building look totally different than it did before. We're looking to make this in there. The other piece too is, we are faith-based, so we believe in that, you know, you give back. We believe in that whole giving back. So our guests will have to give back to the community. That means whether it's trash pickup, going around picking up the trash in the area, whether that means maintenance, you know, fixing up the area, beautification. They have to give back every Saturday and they have to give back every Wednesday.
Is there a time of the day that you say lock the door? Or is it going to be an open door that if I was homeless and I'm on the street at 1:00 in the morning, I can go to your building?
So it will be, it will be locked down at per few, if you want to say, at 8:00 PM. Once it's locked down, they have the buzz system. In other words, like you're saying, someone comes in the middle of the night. Most of the referrals that will come in night will come from the hospital setting, will come from the police department, or will come from agencies out in the community.
And you said security, so how many security personnel will be on site?
So we, we are working in that process right now. In the evening, we are looking, or nighttime, that we talk, third shift, we're looking at either one or two.
Per shift?
Uh, no.
Just at night?
Because we have, we have more staff during the day.
On the third shift, the overnight?
The third shift, yes. The overnight with the.
It'll be law enforcement?
Or a security, or a security staff.
Of your own people?
No, no, no. We're going to contract out.
Agency?
Have you talked to your neighbors around there, the other businesses that are there? The bakery, the restaurant, the jewelry store, and the tuxedo business?
I talked to the tuxedo place. I met with both Nancy and her brother. We, I explained the program to them. I've also talked to Lee Electric, which is across the street from it. I stopped over at the garage place, handed my information. They're obviously were working at the time. I've reached out to other locations in the area also. I talked to the major from the Salvation Army.
I appreciate what they, they agree or not agree. I'm glad you did it because too many times we have cases come before us that that was done to make life a lot simpler for everybody. So I appreciate you for that.
And I gave them the packet that you guys have.
Anyone else here to give testimony in this case? That's not a microphone for us, that's just for the TV. So you don't have to bend the speaking or anything.
My name is Joseph O'Brien and I am a resident of the city of Scranton and I serve as the city solicitor in the city of Scranton. The reason for my appearance here tonight is to reflect the absolute approval of Mayor Page Cognetti and her administration for this program. The mayor recognizes that you are an independent judicial body and that you're not bound by her opinion, but we ask that you consider her opinion as the highest elected city official and of one who's very concerned about this issue. I think the issue of homelessness is an issue that is a big issue nationally. It's a big issue locally and it's going to become more. It's going to become a greater issue. The, as you just heard from this gentleman, very articulate gentleman. He reflected the fact that this is a very good plan. He's representing an experienced, competent, compassionate organization. We think that they're the right people to perform this very valuable service. It's in the right location and we ask that you approve it. Finally, I'd like to make one additional point, on my own behalf. My family has lived in the city of Scranton for 160 years. My family has had lawyers practicing in the city of Scranton for 150 years. I think I have an understanding of the city and I think I can say that this is the type of program that reflects the gospel values that the people of the city of Scranton have always tried to live by. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to offer testimony?
Yeah. My name is Jeff Belserzak. I'm the owner of the Giant Garage, which is adjacent to the property.
I'm going to raise your right hand and we'll swear in and give your testimony then. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth. The whole truth and nothing about the truth. So hope you got it. All right, please state your name and address again for this.
My name is Jeff Belserzak. I'm the owner of the Giant Garage at 245 Hickory Street. Sure, it's B-A-L-C-E-R-Z-A-K.
Thank you.
Although their mission is commendable, I have a lot of reservations about it. I want to know why they're moving from where they are to this facility. It's my understanding that there's quite a bit of vandalism that went on over there. People defecating, urinating, vehicles broken into, damaged. At my facility, I work on expensive vehicles, mostly trucks that are, some of them are worth over $100,000. Now, once people find out where this place is, it's going to be like a meg. And they're only going to allow so many people in there. What about the people that come and get turned away? Where are they going to go? Okay? Is somebody going to get mad and go next door to my place and see a truck? Break the window perhaps and crawl in there and sleep because they can't get a bed there? Stuff like that alarms me, okay? And like I said, the vehicles that are there are worth a lot of money. That's going to be a problem for me. It's going to be a detriment to my business. It's stuff that I would have to turn into my insurance company. I'm going to lose business over it. Again, their mission is commendable. I just don't want it right next to my business. I have a very big problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Respond to this, tell me why he moved, right?
Why don't you respond to that right now before we're going to.
And I respect actually that decision and I'm going to explain a couple of things. One is, Olive Street opened up where it was because that's where the homeless are. They're all on that river down that side. We have worked for 15 years with the homeless. We, we have a great relationship with them. To say, are they going to come and flock to this location? Let me give you an example of over 198 rescue missions. We're part of a group called City Gate. I talked about this last time. They are the governing body of us. They're the ones that tell us where to go, what we do and that type of thing. In Toledo, Ohio is a great example. They opened up a rescue mission in a different location. The homeless didn't flock to that location. What happened was is, that's why we started this outreach program. We had to go to them and say, "Hey, listen, why don't you come to us to the homeless shelter? They're not going to congregate to this area." The next part is, would you say, what's, what's the safety measures that's going to be that we have to turn them away? Unlike other missions, or unlike other homeless shelters, we are not going to just say, "Hey, listen, you're gone. The doors are closed. We hit full capacity, no vacancy." We're going to work with them in getting them connected to a place for that time. So we have other resources that we can use in the community. We want to partner with other resources in the community for that same exact reason. If, and I apologize, if you decide to come over and there's no beds, we're going to say, "Okay, let's figure out what's going on." Nine times out of 10, there might be an issue going on with mental health or going on with drug and alcohol. Get them connected to the mental health treatment. Get them connected to the drug and alcohol treatment. Or maybe, hey, we have a partnership with the other homeless shelter in the community. Hey, can you take this individual for right now till we have a bed that's open? We're not just going to say, "Hey, we're not helping you. Good luck, you know, don't let the front door hit you on the way out." We're actually going to work on the communication, trying to get them where they need to go and get them moving. We're not just going to drop them there.
Just, and if you can't get them another, get a bed someplace, then what? I'm more thinking of the person, what happens to them then?
So outreach, I keep pointing because our outreach team is here. The outreach team will follow, will track them. We make a quick phone call to them. They're flagged. We start following them. We start tracking them. We start making sure they're okay. We start the transformation already on the outside. It sounds bad, but we start the transformation already on the outside when they're out in the tents that you guys see, that type of thing, and start getting them. When a door opens up, we bring them in for that transformation. The other piece that I want to say too is, we've just noticed, now, the nation just reversed the eviction notice. But with this eviction in the state of Pennsylvania that was lifted, we're starting to see an influx of people that are becoming homeless. And I'm begging that we need to start being proactive and reactive or we're going to see a nightmare in our hands in Scranton and Wilkes-Barre, all across the northeastern Pennsylvania with people that are going to be evicted. And it's going to be out of control, but we're not going to be able to handle it with what we have right now.
I think he was concerned about what was happening at your other location with vandalism and cajit. Explain to him, is that happening or?
So we worked, we have a very strict guidelines now. I will, I'm the first one to admit and I'm very transparent. In the past, we've had a history. That is 100% correct. But when I came on as executive director, one of the things that the board instilled with me and the president really pushed on to me was you got to change the way things are being done and what's going on down there. So we do have a very strict policy down there, but you have 15 years of engraving in Olive Street. The minute we move to a different location, the rules are set in stone. They don't change. There's no negotiation. There's nothing, it's exactly the way the rulebook says. Follow it, we got to go by the guidelines. So to answer your question, we're starting right off on the right foot. The stuff that happened down there, the year that I've been there, I have my staff that goes out and tells people, "No, you can't hang out here." When there are people hanging out, it's the distribution piece of it, which is the clothing and the food drive that are out there. Or when we do the message and a meal, where we give out the hot meals in the evening, they are there. We tell them, "Take the meals and go." With the result of the defecation and to the urination, we saw an increase of that happen when this COVID-19 hits. I took an initiative to start building, putting porta-johns out there that Keystone Mission paid for because we needed a place for them to go. We put them outside in our parking lot there. We noticed it stopped. We put them outside in our parking lot there, we noticed it stopped. Again, I bring back to the part, it's irrational versus rational decisions. When they're out there living on a flight and flight, they are making irrational decisions, they're not thinking straight. We got to get them inside, get them captured, work with them during the day, just don't kick them out when your shelter's closed. Keep them in there, transform their lives, get them thinking rational decisions, getting them changing the behaviors that they do and move in the right direction to transform their life for the long term.
Anyone else want to offer testimony? Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph P. Hannig. I'm a tenant of Jeff's next door at 245 Hickory Street. And I heard about parking, where are they parking? Is it on street? They don't have, the facility doesn't look to me like it has a lot of parking lots. You're going to have six people at night controlling 60 people? It doesn't seem to me like they're not going to be all over the neighborhood. And I have cars, I have customers picking up cars, dropping up cars at night, during the morning, you know, whatever. And I just don't see them controlling it like they control Olive Street. Now, I have a friend who has a garage behind Olive Street and he said it's terrible. He's got pictures of people sleeping in cars, breaking into cars, garbage all over the place. Yeah, his intentions are good, but is he going to be able to follow through with it?
Thank you. Let's answer the question about the park and I'm sure you have the employee parking covered.
So, first of all, homeless don't usually have cars that are...
I think you saw one of your employees.
Employees? So, we're looking, we actually are contracting out with a firm that's going to, an architectural firm that's going to design the whole idea with the parking, with the staff that we have. The front of the building, we have parking along with the side of the building, which is adjacent between the two properties of ours and the garage, there has parking also. To answer the question about control during the nighttime, again, I said it was going to be locked down. The only reason someone would leave at night is A, an emergency that we have to dial 911 because a health issue, and B would be that they work at night. And again, I have to reiterate, they come back, drug test, breathalyzer.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes.
Please state your name and address, please.
Tom Patterson, South Scranton Neighborhood Association President. I have, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but he said they had to label it under a homeless shelter and then they weren't, they were only going to do this during the daytime? And then he mentioned, oh, they're going to have people staying overnight.
Well, I think, I'd like to explain a better, I understand what you said.
So, this is actually, it's called a transformation center. So, they sleep, it's their residency, I'm sorry to the camera, it's their residency. And then the program is during the day where they start learning about the budgeting, they learn about all that other stuff.
Southside has been, it seems like we're getting dumped on over there. We had the one place on Cedar, it's closed now. Southside is deteriorating and they're putting everything over there and it's making it worse and worse. I think it's time you give Southside a break with this and think of another place where they could go. I'm totally not against it, but Southside, we had enough. It's getting bad and we need a break. And I could tell you where every homeless person is going. They're going along the trail, the whole trail, and I know that for a fact. And they're staying there. And you could tell where they're staying because you could smell the smoke, they're starting fires and everything. You could smell it, so, but that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sharon Capalongo, 411 South Washington Avenue, Scranton. And I own Sharon's Restaurant and I know Justin because for the past couple of years, once a month on Mondays, I've been feeding the homeless over on Olive Street. And I myself have seen what goes on over there. Not that I have anything against it, but if you're going to have people come in and stay there, those people are going to hang around outside somewhere. They're not going to be in that place all day long. So, they're going to hang around outside and they might be asking people for money or, I don't know, it's just, I think, a terrible situation because you can't keep those people in there all day and all night. They're going to have to go someplace or do something, so how is that going to work during the day? I mean, especially with the smoking, like when I'm over there, they're outside smoking and they come back in. And I know that you have rules over there too about them coming in.
So, we're not a day center, first of all, at Olive Street. We don't do the operate that way. What we're going to do here is, I told you about the courtyard, the courtyards for smoking? There, it's going to be a rule that they have to get employed. And that's one of the things I'm going to, I'm putting out there right now is, we need to partner with the community for employment. We did have one person that I spoke to in the area that offered us a substantial amount of jobs for our guests, which is an automatic, open the door and walk very close to where they are to work. We have a process that we're going to follow. I'm going to tell you, this is like no other, and I'm using the word homeless shelter, but we're talking life transformation center here. This is no, like no other homeless shelter in the nation. It's about time that Scranton gets something positive out there saying that we did a great change, that we're the leading front of this nation, and let's bring people in here to show the following, the way that we're doing it. We're looking at getting people, transforming their lives. To talk about what they're going to do is getting jobs, getting treatment, doing what they need to do, getting to their doctor's appointments, getting to their...
I understand that, but I'm worried about my business. The man next door to me, Rocco, said if this happens, he's moving out. Just because you have these businesses there, you don't want people, honestly, I feel terrible even saying it about them being homeless and everything, but people don't like to come around stuff like that. And I have older customers that are afraid, like somebody's standing outside, hanging around or whatever.
I'm going to go back to, I was blessed to be in that homeless shelter in Weston Fieldhouse and we did not have a single incident. We had everyone and they were around and they were outside. They did the things around the park area that were there with other people.
Are they the same ones that have been over there?
No, they're in apartments. They're all living in apartments.
Okay, but I'm saying, are they the same people that have been over on Olive Street?
Yes, they were. They were when we...
And they all of a sudden...
We brought them in because I got the opportunity to get them into our area and touch them. We need to get them, build the relationship. And I want to tell you, this is not just a Keystone Mission effort. This is going to take the city of Scranton's effort, this is going to take the community's effort to work together as a team, to unite as one front to make a change. Because I'm going to tell you right now, and I'm not going on a rant here, but the government and the White House is doing it wrong, the governor's doing it wrong. We need to start doing it on the community level, sticking up for our community and changing the people's lives. Because these are our brothers, our sisters, our grandmothers, our grandfathers, our uncles, our aunts that are there that are homeless. We see the bad parts. I understand the bad ones you're talking about. I will tell you, they're not going to be the ones that are going to seek change. They're going to still live in those, out in the, I don't know who said it, but out on the, on the...
Trail.
Trail, thank you. The ones that are going to change their life, and we're going to hit about 70% of them, are going to be productive members back in society that are going to be put back where they need to go to make a life change in this community. And you know what? They'll eventually be maybe the waitress or waiter that works at your place. They might be the garage mechanic that you hire and work there. They might be the one that does the ironing and cleaning at the tuxedo place. They might be the one that works for Rocco. These are the ones we're looking at to make those changes. But we've got to unite as a community because if we don't, it's going to fail. This whole thing will go around and it'll keep collapsing. Keystone Mission is willing to step up to that effort, to bring it together and move it in the right path. I understand everyone's concern and I understand where it is. And that is why I went around to all the different, and I talked about this last time, I went around to all the rescue missions in the country area and talked to the CEOs, saw how they did things, and I picked and chose the things that worked and I said the other things that did not work, and I want to implement that here. So, it sounds like a homeless shelter, which I understand is the concerning piece of it, but we're looking at a whole different aspect here. It's a life transformation. The short-term relief that we do at Olive Street is no more. We are doing long-term changes. We are changing human lives to, for the better and moving in the right direction.
I know that, but how soon will that happen? I mean, you think that you're going to go right into that building and you're going to...
No, we're not. So, we're putting, we're putting $4.1 million into this operation to change the way this whole building is going to look. We are doing it over phases to make it look, the storefront, and I...
I saw it and it's beautiful.
I mean, we're looking, this is not a rinky-dink, I'm going to throw myself into a building area. We are going to change the image of the location that is there. This is, Keystone Mission is 100% behind it.
Okay, one other question. Why don't they look for someplace where there isn't businesses and...
Find me that location.
I did. I did find you the location and I told them. Down on the bottom of Washington Avenue, all the way down past DNS was an old factory. I think, is that on Washington Avenue?
They tore that down.
It was beautiful though. I mean, before they tore it down, I told them two years ago.
So, we did, I mean, I'm not getting into that part of it here, but...
That would have been perfect.
We're getting off track. We're testifying to each other. Right now, we're taking testimony.
Like with anything else, like prisons, nut houses or whatever, I mean, people don't want to live around them.
Well, they're actually mental health institutions, okay?
Right, okay.
So, here's the problem. I mean, we can't look at this, it's not, this is not a funny matter. I mean, these are people's lives that we're looking at.
He's laughing at me, not...
But again, I take it personally because these are people's lives we're looking at. And so...
And I understand that too.
And we take the compassion and heart with it. We are working as hard as we can. Keystone Mission, the board brought me on to make a change in the direction that we're going. And I put the plan down and we're executing to what we need to do to make this change in Scranton.
Okay. Now, I'm just worried about my business.
I understand completely.
Like, is that going to affect me until you get the change that you want? How long is it going to take? Like, in other words, you open up your doors for 60 people to come in and live there, how long is it going to take for them to get jobs and to change?
Well, they go through a process where we start teaching them the life skills, teaching them all they need to do, teach them about the job training, then get them the job training, do the shadowing, making sure everything goes through.
In other words, but they're going to be out during the day and walking around and all that kind of stuff. They're not going to have to stay into that building.
There's classrooms. It's going to be just like going to college, going to learning about all the different skills.
Oh, they're in there all day.
You're putting words in my mouth. They're actually going to be out there in the courtyard. They're going to be actually, we're going to take them to their doctor's appointments, take them to the different areas. We are going to make sure we give them everything that they need to be successful.
Okay. That's just my opinion. I don't think that it could happen overnight. I know it can't. Like, what are they going to do? Are they going to stand outside and panhandle customers and they're not going to want to be coming back? Because how many times can you go into a place and hand somebody money? Like...
None of us can answer your questions, but there's a lot of other types of places. We've had them come before us also. Drug rehab, Catholic houses, people have wanted to come. We've all asked the same questions you're asking now. We didn't have the answers or answers you're looking for because none of us can put it through. Right. You just have to trust and people have a salary and be afraid or wary of things that they don't know.
Okay, I'm just saying that because it's my income.
If you want to get more security, even day shift security, or Jeff, if you had more security onsite that would patrol outside, would you feel any better if you could...
Yeah.
There's no guarantees though.
Stop, stop, stop. When I testify, I'm back there. Why ask him a question?
Yeah, well, he asked me a question. There's no guarantees. Like, say at night, they'd say it's like an open door, right? So, say somebody goes out at night, Cedar Avenue is right up the hill, there's bars up there, okay? Have a couple of drinks. Now, even though they won't let them back in, they're intoxicated. Now, you have somebody who's intoxicated or perhaps shot up with something, okay? Now, they're POed, they have nowhere to sleep. So, what do they do? Maybe come over to my place, they see a truck there, oh, the door's locked, I can't get in. Smash the window. Now, what, I come in in the morning, I got a guy or a girl sleeping in my truck with a smashed window, I have a customer who's going to be irate because their window is broken or there was vandalism done to it, right? Now, I lose a customer. It's a possibility. That's my point. Thank you.
And I'm not testifying for guests, but it's also a possibility that a guy that lives up a couple of streets away, up on the other side of Hickory Street, comes out close to a bar and doesn't see anything, has no clue where they are, they don't know that they're not home, they're scared, they could break the window or...
Sure, anything is possible.
It's just more probable.
But it's just, it's a risk that I'm not willing to take because now I'm going to have to turn stuff into my insurance company? My insurance will go through the roof and if it keeps happening, I'm going to lose my carrier. It's just common sense.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to give testimony? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Mary Wood, 211 Hillcrest Avenue, Clark Summit.
Any relationship to this?
So, I'm the board chair, the president of the board of Keystone Mission. And Justin has mentioned a few times, he's mentioned the board, that we're looking for a new direction. And it took a lot, I think, for us to come to that decision because everybody wants to help, you know? Everybody wants to give somebody something. They're hungry, give them something to eat, give them clothing, whatever. But we are determined to not just give, but to do, as Justin said, it's a life transformation. And one thing that I'd like to clarify, that I think that maybe is a little confusing about the, you know, a homeless shelter versus a life transformation, I think you're thinking like a homeless shelter, like an emergency shelter is like, I'm out on the street, I don't know what to do, I'm just going there and then I leave in the morning. That is not what, that is not at all what we're doing here. We're only bringing people in who are interested in changing their lives, that don't want to live on the streets. They don't, they don't want that. There are, there are some, don't get me wrong, there are some people who are very, very happy, you know, they're resigned to, this is my life, I like living on the street. That is really not what the transformation center is looking for. That our team agape, yes, they go out, they talk with them, they meet with them, they try to get them the right services that they need, but that is not who's coming to our, to the mission on Hickory Street. That's not what we're looking to do. We want people to change, we want them to better themselves, and the only way they're going to do that is if they want to. Like, we will partner with them. Like Justin said, we want to partner with the businesses in the area that, you know, we can find jobs for people and train them. So, they, they're not going to be down on the trail. They're going to be confined and when you say confined, it's just like anything else, there's rules. Like, okay, like somebody said, there could be somebody coming from up the street, okay? And they could be at a bar and they could be drunk or whatever and come down and smash your things. Here, we have rules. It's, there will be rules. You can't go out after 8 o'clock. You cannot. You cannot leave unless you have a job that you're going to and then you're required to come right back. It's not...
Gentlemen, we can't give a testimony. Thank you.
That's okay. So, you know, we don't want anything to happen to you. We want to be good partners, we want to be good neighbors. So, that's why we're putting into place like rules, regulations, security. Our employees, you know, you say, oh, well, we don't have a security in the daytime. The people who work there and know these, you know, know the people and know how to react to them and we're going through this training where we have the grant for this and it's, it really is specialized training. You may say, okay, well, they're not really security, but they know what they're doing. You know, they may not tackle somebody or, you know, or carry a gun with them, but they know how to diffuse a situation because they're being trained in that way to be able to deal with people. And like I said, we want to be good partners, we want to be good neighbors and we're, I'm giving you my word as the chairman of the board who has really worked, I've been on the board now for about four and a half years. And I could tell you, before, before Justin started, I could not argue with you. I couldn't say, you know what? I just couldn't. But the board has gone in a different direction. We've hired a person who is committed and dedicated, he has a wonderful staff and we're very supportive of that. And that's the direction we want the city of Scranton, I mean, we see, we see it, you know, I mean, jeepers, they're, they're out there on the trail, they're down there by the river, it's dirty, it's awful. Why, who would want to live like that? We want to be able to clean up that area and give people the tools to get them to live a productive life in the city of Scranton. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Just so you know, I'm really not against this, but I wish you would find a different location. Now, to answer your question, I worked and lived in the city for over 20 years. I've seen everything. I know, I was telling Justin, I know where they're staying. I can tell you exactly, almost every place where they're staying, even in the wintertime, I can tell you. And I wish you would find another location. Because like I said, Southside, we're getting hammered. They had another place there, that failed. And they're putting more stuff in Southside and more stuff in Southside and we're having trouble keeping up. And it's hurting Southside.
Well, we're really hoping to make this, but it's something that's a very good thing
that we're gonna say, wow, wow, look at what Southside's doing.
It's not, though. I'm telling you, though.
Well, I'm thinking it will be.
Thank you.
Dan Sanacero, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do. Just a couple of questions. I'm not trying to hurt anybody here, but how long are you over in the section that you're in now?
Fifteen years.
Okay, and how long are you over at Weston Field?
Two months.
Okay. So, by you moving over there to here, why didn't you, why didn't you stay and try to buy the place on Wyoming Avenue that the neighbors got a lawyer and says they don't want you there? What was the reason for you deciding to decide not to fight them and come over on our side? Simple question.
So, no, it's a valid question, and so...
You guys should know that, 'cause you guys, you're part of that, there's a history there, you know that, right? Okay, so, now, they kicked the can to us. I've got so many cans kicked to Southside, I need a dumpster to get rid of. And I'm not against the homeless. I came from a family of ten children. We struggled our whole life. A lot of people here struggle. I'm all for helping people, but you're moving out of that area, there's gotta be a reason why. Is it because they're bad boys, bad girls, and they're not claiming that the neighbors' rights? Okay, so what's gonna make, how are you gonna make me believe that you're gonna change that? St. Francis and Vissi's Kitchen's there, so you really should stay on that side, 'cause now you don't have to feed anybody. So, you went to Wyoming Avenue, and you tried to push this through Wyoming Avenue, and they got fed up and got a lawyer, and you guys backed off and you left. So, now, you're gonna come on our side and see if we're weak enough that you're gonna come to our side, and we may not get a lawyer. That's what's happened.
I will disagree with that. So, one, Olive Street, we can't use, it's not equipped to do a shelter that we're looking at. As for the Wyoming Ave, we looked at the location, we thought it was gonna be a great location to work with, with what we had. You guys, as a committee, came back with some really good parts. Parking was a big issue. They came back with a lawyer. We decided, obviously, A, yes, it does cost us money, and we wanted to say, okay, we wanna be good stewards of our area. This building came up, we thought it was a great location, a great area to put it in, it had the things that we needed to make the work. The other thing I wanna add in is, we talked about at night, if someone comes in in the middle of the night, it's not like we're throwing them away in the middle of the night. If we have a bed, we let them come in, breathalyzer, drug test, and come in, the security staff would bring them in, give them a bed, and start their transformation then. So, it's not like we just kick them out just because it's at night.
That seems to be one of the concerns. The breathalyzer creates a certain level of security that maybe some people here are more comfortable hearing that you're gonna be doing that testing. But in that situation where somebody shows up late at night, and they're given a breathalyzer, and they're under damn threats, are they turned away, or are they given twenty-four hours to sleep and then maybe start program?
So, there are shelters out there that have that philosophy, where they bring them in, they're put in a special, I hate to use the word holding tank, but they're put into a facility where they're monitored, they're watched, they're followed through. The way I envision it is that they would come in, we would track, see where the system is, and then again, start connecting them to resources. Immediately, we can call and get the, they're called CRSs, that the CMC has, that they can come down, they can start doing drug and alcohol assessment, get them placed, get them automatically into a facility to get stabilized drug and alcohol-wise, and then bring them back to our facility to start transforming their lives when they're clean.
Anyone else? I think you heard a lot of concerns here tonight, and I think part of the problem is that your reputation from the past is falling, and probably just five of us, I mean, I think you guys, you said you admitted to it. I understand the business that I dare, they're established businesses and everything, and they have deep concerns about their investments, that their property and their livelihood and everything, so I think you tried to address them the best you could, and I don't know if they're addressed to the acceptance of the people that spoke against or anything like that. Anywhere you go?
I also think that today, it's the Southside. If you came to Kaiser Valley, it'd be the, it would be the, it's this Kaiser Valley Neighborhood Association, they come out with the same concerns. You came to, you know, North Grand, North Grand, they would all have the same concerns. You're gonna have it anywhere you go, but I agree with him. You've answered a lot of questions. Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Is it hurt?
I make a motion.
Hang on a second, we're gonna, do we have any contingencies here?
No. We broke them last night.
That's last night, Chris.
No, but we don't have any contingency.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a different building. The only thing, we don't have an answer to is the parking, so...
And then, we're gonna come back with the, for the parking and all that stuff.
So, you want the tables tonight to come back?
No, no.
What's the parking required? Are... Okay, but I think the question was where they're gonna park their cars.
Right.
I think it's more out of like...
I believe it was for the variance of the homeless shelter that we asked for.
No, what I'm saying is, one of the questions from the neighbors there...
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I don't think there's anything else we can do about our parking. I think, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Would you consider from security on day shift?
Oh, we're open to anything, yes.
Yeah, I think maybe one of the contingencies we can put on here...
Not just day shift, all shifts?
Yeah, all shifts have security.
Like, well...
Oh, okay. I don't wanna die today.
I think maybe it might make your neighbors feel a little bit better if there's trade security stuff, like outside security stuff.
Valid, one hundred percent.
Present during the twenty-four hour period.
Yep, okay.
I don't think it's much to ask, and that they patrol the outside. I mean, I think they're more concerned is their business. If you're not secure outside the building, it's not offering any kind of feel-good technology